I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would you please silently say the Pledge of Allegiance along with me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair, Trustee Bucino.
Here.
Trustee Nevers.
Present.
Trustee Oliver.
Here.
Trustee Smith.
Here.
Treasurer Goodhue.
Here.
Clerk Posey here, Supervisor Dunn.
Here, thank you. We will move on now to the approval of the agenda items. Were there any corrections or additions? Ms. Posey, do we have anything to add or subtract?
No, just the two proposed add-ons that are already listed on the agenda under Consent, Human Resources Department, item number 8A. Proposed add-on, request for medical leave of absence, Fire Department, EE number 1090, and request for medical leave of absence, Fire Department, EE number 0... I'm sorry, 1089. That's all I have.
Thank you. Are there any other corrections to the agenda?
Hearing none, Clerk Posey will make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Was that Ms. Nevers?
Ms. Posey.
No.
Motion by Ms. Posey.
Supported by Nevers.
Supported by Ms. Nevers to approve the agenda as presented. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair, Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Bucino?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes. That motion carries. Next is the approval of the bills. As usual, there are two bill runs. If you wish an item removed, please indicate so at this time.
Madam Chair, since there are no issues with either bill run, I move that we approve both bill runs.
Motion by Ms. Nevers.
Supported by Goodhue.
Supported by Ms. Goodhue to authorize payment of both bill runs. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair, Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Bucino?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes, Supervisor Dunn?
Yes, that motion carries also. The approval of the previous meeting minutes are before you for your approval, those being the minutes from August 26th. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes? Madam Chair, Clerk...
Go ahead, Karen, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay. I'll make a motion to approve the previous meeting minutes from August 26, 2020, as presented. Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Support by Smith.
Seconded by Ms. Smith to approve the minutes from August 26th. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair, Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Bucino?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes, Supervisor Dunn?
That motion carries. Next is the Consent Agenda. These are routine matters that come through for the Board. If you wish to discuss an item on the consent, please indicate so.
Madam Chair, hearing nothing, I will make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
Thank you. Motion by Ms. Posey.
Support by Smith.
Ordered by Ms. Smith to approve the Consent Agenda. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair, Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Bucino?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes, that motion carries, thank you. Next we go to Public Comments. This is non-agenda and non-agenda items. If you wish to speak, just raise your hand. And please remember, there's a three-minute time limit.
If anyone wishes to speak, you can press the phone line on your phone if you called in, or you can click the raise hand button on the Zoom app. They'll call on you. Frank Cusmano, go ahead.
Frank Cusmano, 16188 Jenny Drive. I'm making public comment on Agenda Item Number 15, the Conflict of Interest Policy. It is seriously flawed and should not be adopted. It includes different definitions than in the Ethics Ordinance. Most importantly, what is defined as conflict of interest. This means that an employer or public official could not be subject to a violation of the Ethics Ordinance, but subject to discipline under the policy as written. I would suggest that it be rewritten to incorporate by reference the Ethics Ordinance preamble and the definitions of employees, public officials, and conflict of interest. It basically reads, "Any employee is subject to discipline..." Oh, it also does indicate that the policy does not supersede the collective bargaining agreement. It's seriously flawed. There's one other issue. I don't know if it was a mistake, but the Pledge of Allegiance that was read, is that the Pledge of Allegiance that I'm familiar with? Including "One Nation Under God." I don't know if that was intentionally deleted or if it was unintentionally deleted by the supervisor. And finally, I'd like to share some news. Whether or not it's good depends on your perspective if you're fighting public corruption. But Eric Smith pled guilty in federal court the same day that his information was filed in the U.S. District Court today for obstruction of justice and witness tampering. That concludes my public comments. Thank you.
Anyone else?
We have Julianne Cusmano, go ahead.
Hello, it's Julianne Cusmano. Can you hear me?
Yes, but very...
Just very faint.
Very faint, sorry. I can talk a little louder, can you hear me?
There you go.
While my name's... I'm just calling at 16188 Jenny Drive, Julianne Cusmano. I just wanted to know if Christie Posey could put people at ease and tell everybody the process of how Macomb Township will be doing the ballots, because I have no problem mailing mine in or dropping it off in the box. But I think it'd be really great if we can assure people of the process we have in Macomb. That's all, thank you.
Next we have Kathy Shane, go ahead.
Hello, yes, this is Kathy Shane, 24355 Kathy and Drive. I spoke last week in regards to the traffic situation and the Legacy Farms decision. And I was just calling in to urge the Board to look at what the planning department has and what's been issued for occupational developments around us, since there doesn't seem to be a salute problem in traffic. That's all.
Anyone else?
Does not look like it.
All right, is there anyone else?
No.
No?
Nope.
Very well. Then we will move on to new business. Engineering Department is requesting a scheduled date for a public hearing for street lighting, special assessment district resolution for Pinnacle Farms site condominiums. Mr. Van Tiflin, I understand all of the lots are still in the possession of the developer? And they are just looking for a date, correct?
That is correct. We're recommending October 14, 2020.
October 14th, very well. Is there a motion to that effect?
Yes, Madam Chair, this is Nevers. I make a motion to schedule a public hearing for street lighting, SAD resolution for Pinnacle Farms site condominiums for October the 14th, 2020.
Motion by Ms. Nevers.
Support by Smith.
Seconded by Ms. Smith to set October 14th as the public hearing date for street lighting, SAD for Pinnacle Farms site condominiums. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair, Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Bucino?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes, and Supervisor Dunn?
Yes, this resolution is adopted. Next is a request to approve Pay Estimate Number Two for the 2020 Pathway Gap Closure. Mr. Van Tiflin?
Yes, Madam Chairperson, Board members. The contractor is requesting the second payment for the 2020 Pathway Gap Closure Construction Program. We have reviewed the request and are recommending that the Board approve payment in the amount of $137,174.70. You happy to answer any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Van Tiflin?
Jim, is it 70 cents or 40 cents? Because on our minutes, it's 40 cents.
Hold on, I'm going to look in the packet here. It's 70 cents.
70 cents, okay.
70 cents.
With that, I will make a motion that we approve the Pay Estimate Number Two for the 2020 Pathway Gap Closure Program in the amount of $137,174.70.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Support by Posey.
Seconded by Ms. Posey to approve Pay Estimate Number Two. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair, Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Bucino?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
And Supervisor Dunn?
Yes, motion carries, thank you. Now we have a Human Resources request, and this is to accept the Township Office's holiday closure period. Mr. Assorti?
Madam Chair, members of Board, as this Board's all well aware, several years ago, there was some analysis conducted by the Township that reviewed the cost savings while taking into account the availability of the public. And a determination was made that was in the best interest of the Township to close during Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve. With that, we learned that the Treasurer's Office has to be open one day during that period to collect taxes, and of course, the Fire Department has to make appropriate staffing arrangements, which we've negotiated now with all the unions. So with that, and there's notice requirements for both the MAPE and ASME units, and it's necessary for us, for the Board to take action. So with that, I ask for a motion to approve the closure of the Township Offices with the exceptions I noted in the Fire Department and Treasurer's Office between December 24, 2020, and January 1, 2021. And I'll happy to answer any questions anyone has.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Assorti?
Madam Chair, hearing none, I will make a motion that the Township Offices be closed for the period of Christmas Eve through January 1, for the holidays.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Supported by Nevers.
Supported by Ms. Nevers to approve the holiday closure. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair, Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Bucino?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes, Supervisor Dunn?
Yes, that motion carries. Next we have Planning and Zoning Department, and they are requesting an extension of time for preliminary plans for Mistwood Estates Site Condominiums. Mr. Box?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board. Mistwood Estates is a residential community located on the south side of 23 Mile Road east of North Avenue in Section 24 of the Township. It is a single-family residential development and has two phases. There'll be 76 lots in Phase One, 58 lots in Phase Two. They were previously approved and are working towards construction. This development would be connected to neighboring developments such as Pinnacle Woods. At this time, all internal departments are recommending approval, and the Planning Commission is ready unanimously to recommend approval of the extension as they continue to work towards construction.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Box?
Madam Chair?
Madam Chair.
I will make a... Go ahead, Kathy.
It's actually Clerk Posey. I'll make a motion to accept the Planning Commission to recommend approval of the extension of time for preliminary plans, Mistwood Estates Site Condominiums located on the south side of 23 Mile Road, permanent parcel number 0824201018.
Motion by Ms. Posey.
Supported by Goodhue.
Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair, Clerk Posey, yes. Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Bucino?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes, that motion carries. Next is a request to approve the preliminary plan, and this would be for Penzean Estates Site Condominiums. Mr. Box?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board. This is... Penzean Estates is another single-family development. It is a site condominium located on the south side of 25 Mile Romeo Plank Road. It's a relatively small development, 14 units, two of which will be fronted on 25 Mile. The other 12 would actually be accessed through Penzean Farms, the neighboring development. At this time, they are seeking approval for the preliminary plan, which has approval from the local departments and was voted as recommended for approval by the Planning Commission.
Any questions for Mr. Box?
Madam Chair, this is Trustee Smith. I'll make the motion and request to approve the preliminary plan, Penzean Estates Site Condominiums located on the south side of 25 Mile Road east of Romeo Plank, permanent parcel number 08-08-200-009.
Motion by Ms. Smith.
Supported by Nevers.
Supported by Ms. Nevers to approve the preliminary site plan for Penzean Estates Site Condominiums. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair, Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Bucino?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes, Supervisor Dunn?
Yes, this motion carries. Next we have Supervisor's Office, and this is the Emergency Response and Workplace Safety Policy. Mr. Assorti?
Madam Chair, members of the Board, the Township currently has in place an emergency evacuation and response policy that was approved by the Board in August of 2013, as well as a workplace safety policy that became effective in 2004. Because of the correlation between the subject matter and the employee training, including the recent training conducted by Chief Phillips, it appeared to be appropriate to combine those two policies and deal with them in one policy. In addition to that, we've included new language to follow the recommendations of the Homeland Security with regard to an active shooter and other safety situations. The new policy outlines the procedures involved in the instance of a workplace emergency or threat, as well as identifying inappropriate contact related to workplace safety. So I'll ask for a motion to approve the attached Emergency Response and Workplace Safety Policy. And of course, I could answer any questions if anyone has.
Are there any questions for Mr. Assorti on this policy?
Madam Chair, this is Treasurer Goodhue. I'll make a motion that we approve the Emergency Response and Workplace Safety Policy.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Supported by Nevers.
Supported by Ms. Nevers to approve the Emergency Response and Workplace Safety Policy as requested. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair, Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Bucino?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes, Supervisor Dunn?
Yes, this motion carries. Next is a Conflict of Interest Policy. Mr. Assorti?
Madam Chair, members of the Board, the Township currently has in place a conflict or interest policy that became effective in January 1, 2016. The policy's been reviewed and confirmed compliance with the current laws and the Township procedures and provisions, including the new Ethics Ordinance. Certain language was changed, and specifically, for instance, the use of financial interest changed to direct pecuniary interest and removal of reference to a purchasing agent and identification of the individual's immediate supervisor. With that, I'll ask for a motion to approve the Conflict of Interest Policy, and I can certainly answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Assorti on the Conflict of Interest Policy?
Madam Chair, this is Trustee Smith. I didn't go over the Conflict of Interest Policy over with the Ethics Ordinance Policy. Would it be okay if we... Can I make a motion to adjourn it just for the next meeting so I can review the two policies, please?
I really don't know the answer to that.
Trustee Smith, if you're requesting to postpone the agenda item, you need to make a motion to postpone the agenda item for further review till the next board meeting?
Okay, Madam Chair, may I make a motion to adjourn Item Number 15, the Conflict of Interest Policy, to review it for the next board meeting?
Sure, would you...
Madam Chair, Clerk Posey will second it.
That's a motion, Ms. Smith?
Yes, I make a motion to adjourn till next meeting on the Conflict of Interest Policy.
All right, motion by Ms. Smith.
Supported by Nevers.
Everyone's talking at the same time. I have a motion by Ms. Smith. Who seconded it?
Clerk Nevers. Oh, sorry, I didn't hear that.
It's okay.
To... Do you want it postponed for two weeks?
Yes, Madam Chair, just for the next board meeting, please.
Very good, to postpone this issue for two weeks. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair, Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Bucino?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes, that policy will be discussed in two weeks' time at the next board meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. The next item is the Smart Bus Service Transfer Credits and Renew Their Contract. Mr. DiCaro, are you on the phone?
All right, I'm going to go ahead with this then. We received a notification from Smart Bus Service that we had a fairly large amount of credits available to us. And along with that, their contract was up for renewal. We got together, my deputy, myself, and Mr. DiCaro, and spoke about what we could possibly do with these transfer credits and came up with several ideas that we thought were good until we made a phone call and asked Mr. Barbret, who is the ombudsman there. And he shot us down on almost everything. So on further discussion with Mr. DiCaro, we decided that probably the best thing that we could do is to expand our services. And I'll give you an example. Right now, we participate in the airport service where I think it's two days a week they will take our residents to the airport, drop them off, and then again, on the return, pick them up, as long as they make arrangements for this beforehand. So instead of two days a week, we expanded it to a whole week. We've also decided to add some trips once a week to places like the Detroit Zoo, to Frankenmuth, to the DIA. And it would be on a first-come, first-served basis. And we felt that that would probably be a better use for our credits that we have. So right now, I'm asking for you to renew the contract and to use the essential credits as best we can. The remainder of the transfer credits that we cannot use would be turned over to Richmond Lennox EMS Service, who actually run the Smart Service out of their facility. I've been up there several times, and they do a wonderful job. They bought three new trucks in the last six months, and they are providing a wonderful service. Every time we get their report, our ridership goes up, except, of course, the last four or five months are with COVID. But before that, we were increasing every month as far as the number of residents that are riding our Smart Buses. So with that, I'll ask you to renew the contract and to use the credits as well as we can. Any questions? Very well. Is there any comments or motions?
Madam Chair, this is Clerk Posey. Hearing none, I'll make a motion to authorize the supervisor to transfer the accumulated Smart credits of four-hundred-and-six-thousand-five-hundred-and-seventy-two and seventy-six back... Or seventy-six cents back to Smart for reimbursement to the Richmond Lennox EMS Ambulance Authority for transportation services from a Compton Township resident.
Anyone? That would be support... Yes, supported by Nevers. Motion by Miss Posey, seconded by Miss Nevers to renew the Smart Bus contract and to transfer the credits that we cannot make yourself. Miss Posey?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Madam Chair, before we call the roll, then I would like to amend my motion to authorize the supervisor to enter into the contract two thousand twenty-one with Smart for transportation services from a Compton Township residence. I forgot that part.
Okay. Miss Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes. I just have to check with Trustee Nevers. Are you okay with the amendment to the motion?
I am.
Okay. So Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Bucino?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes. Thank you very much. That motion passes. We will now move on to Board comments. And we'll start with the trustees. Miss Nevers?
Yes. Madam Chair, two things. Mr. Cusamano mentioned that the "In God We Trust" was left out of the pledge. I too hope that was by mistake and not on purpose. And then, I would also like to assure anybody listening about voting in the general election, if you have any concerns at all, vote in person. I can say I did that at the primary, and it was smooth as silk, very, very efficient, no problem at all. Thank you. That's the end of my comments.
Anything else? Miss Nevers, anything else?
No, I said... I'm sorry. That concludes my comments.
Okay. Miss Smith?
Madam Chair, thank you. I have nothing further to add tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Bucino?
Yes, Madam Chair. I want to follow up also with Mr. Cusamano's recognition that "One nation under God" was left out of the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. I also think it was probably just an oversight and mistake, but it is the second time it's happened in the past couple of months at a meeting. I am... Me being a member of the Knights of Columbus, the Knights of Columbus were very instrumental in adding the line "under God" to our Pledge of Allegiance. Actually, the resolution in Congress to put "under God" in the Pledge of Allegiance was introduced to Congress by a Michigan congressman and signed by President Eisenhower Flag Day in nineteen fifty-four. Again, I just have that background beyond past Grand Night of Knights of Columbus. So I just hope in the future, we just make sure that "under God" is not left out again.
Thank you. Mr. Oliver?
Yes. Couple things. One, Planning Commission, as everyone knows, we're working on the master plan. And we're at the point where we're getting together landowners, small business owners, developers, and also homeowners and associations. And we'll be working with them. They will all be stakeholders, and we're going to be asking them their input. That's... And just want to bring the Board aware of that. And the second thing I want to talk about is now that the Governor has kind of lifted some areas I see that's open, and our own facility is open, bowling alleys, et cetera. I'm really hoping that the Board of Trustees can start meeting at our meeting office and somehow putting that together. We could maybe use Zoom for the residents if we have something that a lot of residents will be there. Maybe some could come. There just has to be a way that we could start putting this together. And I don't know, Janet, have you heard anything from the state on this? Right now, the state is holding a conference in Mackinac Island, and it sure seemed to be a lot of people there tonight. So I can't see why we cannot meet as a Board together. And that is my question. I'm done.
Okay. Thank you. Treasurer's comments?
Yes. Since Monday, September the fourteenth, is the last day to pay taxes, your summer taxes, without penalty. Our lines have been quite long this week for people checking in to pay their taxes. When you come in, you do have to wear a mask and be checked, your temperature checked, and fill out a health form. If you do not want to stand in those lines, you can utilize the drop box. I would advise not mailing them anymore. I don't think they will get to us in time. But you can utilize our drop box at the back of the building, the same door that you would have to enter to come in to pay it. If you want a receipt, just include a self-addressed stamped envelope, and we will be happy to send you that receipt once we post your payment. And that will prevent you from having to stand in line. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk's comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And also, thank you to Miss Cusamano for pointing out that there are people that have questions about the voting process. So I prepared some information for this evening. But also, I'd like to inform the residents that I do actively record public service announcements for the Township News Flash, which is located on our main page of our website. And I will be doing specific public service announcements throughout this process, all the way till November, to help educate our voters, which will be located on our website and also our Facebook page. But as you know, the November Presidential General Election is less than two months away, and we anticipate mailing your absentee mail-in ballots on September twenty-fourth. Due to COVID-nineteen, United States Postal Service is operating with limited staff. And with the increase in requests for absentee mail-in ballots, the delivery and return timeframe could be longer than usual. I am strongly encouraging voters, if they choose to vote by mail, to return their ballots to one of our drive-out ballot drop boxes. We have one located in front of Town Hall, next to the flagpole. And we also have one located in front of our senior center, which is directly behind the new Public Safety Building off of Twenty-Three Mile Road. And we are anticipating another location to be available, which will be at Fire Station Three. We are just anxiously awaiting the arrival of that drop box, and I will make an announcement when it is available for our residents. These boxes are available seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day. They're secured and under surveillance at all times. An important note that if you are utilizing a drop box for returns, you can only return the drop boxes. We had residents from all the communities where our residents put their ballots in the wrong drop boxes. And we did retrieve those in time, but we like to avoid that confusion as much as possible. Also, keep in mind, you can always return your ballot in person at the clerk's office, located on the second floor. Right now, the Township building hours are Monday through Friday, nine AM to four PM. Be sure to enter through the back doors. And we will also have extended hours the week prior to the election for our voters' convenience. Please check our website for more information. Although I'm not encouraging voters to return their ballot by mail, the Secretary of State has mandated postage to be included on the absentee voter mail-in ballot return envelope. This is something new to voters. This will be the first time that you receive your ballot with an envelope with the postage paid on it. Please remember, there is no guarantee on delivery time, so if you choose this method, understand that the postage is paid for. My goal is to provide a safe, secure, and inclusive process for voters by offering drive-out ballot drop boxes and applying the latest public health guidelines to provide safe, in-person voting options. I want every eligible voter to participate in a safe and timely way and have their vote counted. I know some... A lot of voters want to know the process for which we receive ballots in the mail. Just to ensure voters, when we receive, first, an application can be sent by the Secretary of State. It can be sent from the local clerk's office, and it could be sent from any party. The application is just your ability to respond to the clerk's office requesting a ballot emailed to you. We can only issue one ballot per registered voter. So once the ballot is issued, the voter receives it in the mail and then can return it to our office via the ways that I have described this evening. Once it's received in my office, it's scanned in by a barcode, and your information is entered into the Qualified Voter File, which then indicates that we have received a ballot for you, and another one cannot be issued. We also verify the voter's signature. That's why it is required that you sign the outside envelope with your signature. If your signature doesn't match your voter registration signature, my office will contact you to bring in proof and verification of signature. Once it's received, it's filed and locked in the clerk's office until Election Day. On Election Day, there's a counting board that goes step by step through the process. But be aware, there's not one individual who handles a ballot from start to finish. It moves down a chain of people with different tasks and responsibilities to ensure your secrecy and that one individual is not handling a ballot for the entire process. Once the ballot is opened and it's verified with our lists that are provided from the Qualified Voter File, we then move to tabulating the ballot. So the ballots are run through our high-speed tabulator at about a thousand ballots per hour. Rest assured, the tabulator does not give us any voter results. All the tabulator gives us is a tabulated number of ballots counted. So just a piece of paper is counted that we can read and verify again. At the end of the night, the information is then transmitted to the county, who then uploads the results and posts them on the website. So I know that's a lot of information to take in. If you have any questions or concerns, please contact my office. There's several years of experience, over a hundred years of experience, of clerks in my office that can answer any of your questions, and we'd be happy to assist at any time. That's all I have.
Thank you. Supervisor's comments? Just have a couple. If you remember, for the last two board meetings, under Supervisor's comments, I've been telling residents about the Hazardous Waste Day. It was held last Saturday, and it was here at Town Hall. And I asked GFL if they could give me a report, and this is what they sent. Hello, Supervisor Dunn. The event went great. We had the best turnout to date. We had four-hundred-and-seven carts come through this year. Outstanding. So we thank them for a job well done. And keep in mind that the electronics recycling is the first Saturday in October. The second thing I want to tell you about is that sponsored by the Macomb Township Historical Commission, a photo book of Macomb Township early days has been compiled by Linda Osborne Sinola. And on Saturday, September nineteenth, at the former Wade Nursery property, there will be a book release in conjunction with an open house to view the original Town Hall. So if you're listening as well as you listened about the Hazardous Waste Day, we should have a bumper crop, as they say. That's all I have, and that is all of the business for this evening. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chair, this is Trustee Smith. I will make that motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Oliver?
That was by Miss Smith?
Motion by Trustee Smith.
Motion is by Miss Smith to adjourn. Miss Posey, call a roll.
Motion was by... I just want to clarify. Motion was by Trustee Smith and supported by Trustee Nevers. Trustee Smith? Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Bucino?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. And Supervisor Dunn?
Yes. That motion carries, and we are adjourned.